Council, please come to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mandy, could you call the roll, please?
DeYoung.
Here.
Rayner Horst.
Here.
Butler.
Here.
Carl Stone.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Dan Strainland.
Here.
Could I get a motion for approval of the tentative agenda?
So moved.
Brandon Horst-Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Rayner Horst.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Dan Strainland.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carl Stone.
Yes.
Motion passed. This time we have an opportunity for a public forum. Anyone wishing to address council regarding any agenda item, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and address, and try to limit your comments to three minutes. Yep, go right up there, Chuck.
Are we on?
You are.
Okay, good. Probably most of you know me, but my name's Chuck VanderWaal, and I'm here to discuss or talk a little bit about the situation of Kiwanis Park. I think it was probably about six years ago when we got started over there, and I think Jeanette gave about five of us individuals permission to take one of the tennis courts and make it into four pickleball courts. And so we taped it, and we painted it, and we made it into some pretty nice courts. And we each, the five of us each put in about 25 hours, not that that matters, but we felt it was very important, and of course, we've also had the nice addition to Caldwell Park with six courts down there. But I think that we'd be making a big mistake by destroying the Kiwanis Park and making it into soccer field. There's a lot of soccer fields around, and there aren't very many pickleball courts. We have just six courts if we destroy this, other than what's at Smash Park, which of course is a paid agenda. And I don't know, just talking with some friends, but the bids that apparently have been taken to redo the pickleball courts at Kiwanis seem outrageous, according to what we've been able to find out online, so that would be one thing to consider. I don't know if you realize how many people are playing pickleball in Pella. And if we take these courts, which we haven't been able to use for about a year now, away, it's really been a great thing for people to interact with each other and make new friends, and anybody of any skill can play it. And I just don't understand what the need would be to be a soccer field with all that we've got. And then we've got this new tennis complex that is by the Pella High School. Would've been nice if we could've added some pickleball courts there. And of course, everybody knows about the big project out by the...
Sports Park.
Yeah, what do you call it?
Sports Park.
Sports Park, you know, and so I don't know, I just wanted to come and state some things from the standpoint of a lot of us pickleball players, even though I'm on the injured reserve list right now. But it's one of the fastest-growing sports, and people are really envious of our community that we've been able to have some of these things. And so I guess I'd like to know what was behind the decision to not resurface, and I'll give way to somebody else.
Okay, thank you.
Hey Spencer, did you know there's a...
Hey, identifying yourself.
Dave Danning, retired doc in the community, avid pickleball fan. Did you know there's a Japanese study that was done that shows that the pickleball racket sports, ping pong, et cetera, are far superior to any other activity for maintaining the brains of us elderly folks? And I think it's because of all the rapid decisions you make out there. Ball's coming at your face, some other places that I won't mention, you gotta make some fast decisions. I was sitting, waiting for a turn at Caldwell this summer, waiting for a chance to play pickleball, looking across the way, looking at all the tennis courts, not a person playing there. We were maxed out, waiting for our turn, not a single person playing on those tennis courts. And I was looking forward to playing on Kiwanis, because I heard that they were going to be repaired by midsummer. Didn't happen. Million dollars to resurface those courts. In medicine, we'd say, get another opinion. We are not doing very well at maintaining courts. A little sealing of cracks, a little filling in of cracks, some painting would go a long way. So I think the maintenance has been pathetic. Caldwell courts are deteriorating, they're getting cracks, and I can see within a year that we won't have Kiwanis and Caldwell being repaired, and we'll actually go to other communities. I've met people from way down in Moravia, lots of people come from, several people come from Oskaloosa, New Sharon, people are coming to this community and playing pickleball. And guess what? You know, they go to Jarsman's, and they go to other places when they're here. I think it's pathetic that there's not pickleball planned for at the sports park. It's pathetic. If we want to be a community that attracts the elderly, the retirement community, we need pickleball. It's the fastest-growing sport in this country, it's been that way for a bunch of years. I come from a large family, and many of us play pickleball. And people that are coming to camp in our community, around our communities, they've got their apps, and they're trying to find a place to play pickleball in Pella. So we need another, we need a soccer court at Kiwanis like we need a hole in the head, basically. And I know there's several of us who'd be very happy to spend time helping maintain courts if we were given some direction, some supplies. The maintenance is pathetic. Thank you for hearing me out.
Becky Marlowe, 218 East State Streets. I agree with everything they've already said, but I just want to add a few more things about pickleball. One is, I don't think Jeanette has a big enough budget to do everything she needs to do, because I've talked with her several times, and she just has a lot of things to maintain and keep up, and it doesn't seem like she can. And like Dr. Dave said, we were promised, or told, that we'd have the Kiwanis courts fixed up starting July 1st, and that never happened. The average age of a pickleball player across the United States is now 38 years old, so it's not just for old people. And probably the biggest thing I want people to just, well, I'll make two things. One is, on your ad hoc committee for your new rec center, you never had a senior citizen or a pickleball player, and that kind of disappointed me. And some of the decisions being made, do you have people who play pickleball helping decide anything, or do you want input from any of this? And the other thing was, I guess the biggest thing about pickleball for me has been the community of people I now know because of pickleball. People that I've lived in the same town with for 40 years, I now know because of pickleball. With me on pickleball court, you play on pickleball, you talk, you learn about them, it's just a lot of, a big community. And I think that is super good for the town of Pella to have so many more people knowing others. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
I would just second.
You gotta come up here, please.
I would just second. My name's Jennifer Palmer, I live at 101 Pike Court. I would just second that it brings people to the community. I can't tell you how many people I have met on the pickleball courts who have come into the community from southern Iowa, from around Iowa camping, like they said. And they come here and they spend their money here, they don't just come to play pickleball, they do other things while they're here. And it is, yes, although it's a sport for the elderly, it's a sport for all ages. We play with our kids all the time, and I can't tell you how many younger than our kids' kids who we see on the courts. And so it brings, it's good for young families, it's good for families with teenagers, it's good for families with grown kids. And a lot of times, when kids come home at like Christmas or in the summer, you see entire families playing. And I think it's up and coming, and it's extremely important for this community to look forward, to bring families, to care for elderly people, to have good pickleball courts. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we'll move on. Can I get a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Strayland.
Right.
Brandon Horst. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Dan Strainland.
Yes.
Rayner Horst.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carl Stone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number 6652, entitled, "Resolution approving change order number one to the construction contract with Kramer Service Group for the Pella Fiber Transport Network to IMU Project." Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this resolution, and for those watching at home on Pella Fiber, and those in attendance, I'd like to direct your attention to the big board for brief presentation on this item. Now, as far as the presentation that we have from SaaS perspective, it's actually for resolutions 6652 and 6653 on tonight's agenda. So both of them pertain to the new transport line that was built that connects Pella Fiber to Indianola Municipal Utilities on this as well. So it's a shared line on this as well. Now, what we have first with the change order that we're talking about this evening is a change order in the amount of $105,1200 on it, and we do have a description of why the change order was necessary, it was also included in the staff memo as well. But let's go ahead, move Mandy into a contract summary. When we started off with our construction contract for the project, we started off with the original construction contract of $1,838,860. Tonight's change order that we're discussing is in the amount of $105,199.79. Council order approved this change order, we de-let up the revised contract of $1,944,000. It is important to note that Newcom, who was the engineer on the project, is recommending approval of tonight's change order. In addition, his counsel is aware, for those in attendance may not be aware, this is a joint project with Indianola Municipal Utilities. Everything you see up on the board here is split 50/50 with Indianola Municipal Utilities, so the city's total share of the construction contract's about $972,000. IMU has already approved tonight's change order as well. Staff is recommending approval of the change order. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the presentation on this particular change order. And before I go on to the next item, is there any questions on resolution 6652?
Is that up and running?
It is, technically it's working, but we don't have any traffic on it yet. They're waiting on this signed docs before they put the traffic on. We'll get that to them, and probably get it up as quick.
Okay. Okay, well, let's go ahead with item number 6653, which is the transport network. Again, once again, this item, we're talking about our new transport line that connects Pella Fiber to Indianola Municipal Utilities. It is important to note that when we talk about this transport line in this particular agreement that we have with not only Indianola Municipal Utilities, you also know as a party to the agreement is Cedar Falls Municipal Utilities. And what we're talking about this evening, when we talk about this resolution, is the electronics at the end of the line that actually operates the transport line. And so the electronics are operated by Cedar Falls, that's why they're a party to the agreement, that's also who supplies our internet, as well as our television services for Pella Fiber as well. So with this agreement, there we go, up there, again, the agreement is a 2080 agreement, so anytime you hear that, that's government lingo for a contract on here, but we have an agreement, proposed agreement with Cedar Falls and IMU. And once again, we're talking about the electronics that will be administered by Cedar Falls and maintained by Cedar Falls at the end of the transport line. The electronics are actually located in downtown Des Moines in Grinnell, and that's how we connect to Cedar Falls, and that's it, and Cedar Falls connects to the internet. So basically, this is necessary to operate the transport line. And with that, Mr. Mayor, maybe, do we have any additional slides?
Yes, of course.
We have here is a one-time setup fee that would be paid by both Pella Fiber as well as Indianola Municipal Utilities, the amount of $10,000 for the setup of the electronics, and roughly $3,600 per year per operating cost. Now, to put that in perspective, currently, we are leasing a backup transport line for Pella Fiber, and we're paying over $60,000 per year on it as well. So the transport line, we think, is going to have instant value for both Pella Fiber as well as Indianola Municipal Utilities. But again, this particular agreement, we have a one-time setup fee along with $3,600 per year in annual operating costs. With that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the presentation on that item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I have a motion for approval of resolution 6652?
So moved.
Support. DeYoung, Carl Stone, any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Carl Stone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Dan Strainland.
Yes.
Rayner Horst.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Motion passed. So moving on to resolution number 6653, entitled, "Resolution accepting the construction of the Pella Fiber Transport Network to IMU." Mike already discussed it. Is there a motion for approval?
Support.
Hopkins, Carl Stone, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Carl Stone.
Yes.
Dan Strainland.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Rayner Horst.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number 6654, entitled, "Resolution entering into a 2080 agreement between the Municipal Communications Utility of the City of Cedar Falls, City of Pella Communications Utility and Indianola Municipal Utilities, providing for shared use of certain facilities and related matters." Nothing there, right? That's correct. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support, Mr. Strayland, Carl Stone, any discussion?
Yeah.
All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Dan Strainland.
Yes.
Carl Stone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Rayner Horst.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, suddenly I can hear myself. Can I get a motion for approval of abstract bills number 2143?
Move to approve and issue warrants.
Support.
Brandon Horst, DeYoung, any questions? All right, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Rayner Horst.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carl Stone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Dan Strainland.
Yes.
Motion passed. Anyone in council have any other business to discuss this evening?
I simply wanted to thank our community, our roads crew, unbelievable job they did, and also to thank the county crew as well. It just amazes me how we can dig out of 22 inches of snow that quickly and that efficiently. And while we're all cozy in bed, they are not. So, thank you.
Not a lot of sleep for some guys this past week.
Not all of us are cozy.
[laughing].
And I think it might be worth mentioning for those who have not been following, the issue, the whole point of a million dollars to hook up with Indianola is to create a redundant loop in our fiber optic network. Prior to that, why we had to go through Grinnell and Indianola and pay a big fee to a third party for redundancy. And now we have a closed loop to just, like the rest of our electric system, to guarantee reliability.
It's a good point.
Anything else? All right, any member of the public have any other business that you would like to address council with tonight? If so, come forward, we'll move the mic back over there, state your name, address, try to limit your comments to three minutes.
I can start with that while he's moving the mic. Lao, Venter Biden, 1120 West Third, Pella. I want to reiterate what this Brandon Horst said about the quality of service that the street department did for getting us dug out. Incredible job. We have trucks that travel down the city streets and had no problems, so, on Friday, in the midst of it, so. I have a request for consideration, but before I say that, we talk about the weather, and then we talk about what's coming next, the next season. For us, we think about spring. For you folks, Mr. Mayor and council, you talk about budget season. And my request for consideration tonight comes with the request of paving West Third, 1,100, 1,200 block of West Third. Some of the councilmen travel it on a regular basis, we've talked about it a number of times. I can remember well when we built the house on West Third, because it was the year of the tornado that premieres. And so, just to do the math, the number of years. I also want to compliment two panels of concrete that are in that pavement, because we had to put new water and sewer in, and those panels of concrete, by Pella Concrete Contractors, are phenomenally holding up well. The rest of the street, not so well. In fact, I would call it a gravel road now. And compliments to the city public work staff for putting Band-Aid on Band-Aid on Band-Aid, but they use the tar gravel coating to control the potholes, and we now have a gravel road. And dusty, you know, just not real pleasant to live on. So my request is, consider street paving of West Third. And I'm only going to put that in as a request, because I don't know, Danny Byard's not here tonight, I don't know if there's higher priorities. But I do know that when we built the house, that West Third was in the five-year plan for new paving construction. We've surpassed the five-year plan, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, then we're going to adjourn to policy and planning. We'll start with a discussion of the community center renovation project update.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have Mr. John Bloom of Burn Associates that's here tonight to talk about the proposed renovation to the city's community center. And in reviewing John's presentation tonight, what we're interested in is the design that's being proposed, and the layout of the facility, and now's our chance to ask any questions. But I would also like to mention to council, any questions on the financing of the project? We are scheduled to have a special council meeting next Tuesday, January 23rd, where we're going to be talking about city finances in regards to the long-term facility plan. So, any questions on ultimately financing this project? If you could please reserve those until next Tuesday, it might be a better use of time with that as well. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and turn the floor over to John for his presentation.
My last minute, a little angle issue, so. My name's John Bloom, I'm an architect for the Shimmer Associates out of Des Moines, Iowa. I'm just going to go through some of the community outreach we did, and show the floor plans, some of the design, and then we'll talk about our current cost estimate. The community center is home to the popular arts center program, Crossroads, which certainly provides important social services, and auditorium where the union street players and other groups have performances. It's home to the community service offices, the DOT, and art gallery, and much more. We've been working with the ad hoc, Pella Community Center ad hoc committee for the last year or so to develop future use of the facility and make recommendations on how to move forward with the project. Our initial goals were to enhance user experience, increase usage, and support solutions that are financially feasible. So I just want to talk a little bit about our community outreach effort. In the beginning, we had public meetings, we had online surveys to gather information about what members of the community wanted to see, what kind of program they wanted to see, what kind of improvements they wanted to see to the existing building. And I won't get into all these, I just want to point out that we made an effort to understand what the community wanted. The public input results, I won't go into every single one, the main highlights are that they wanted to get the gym reopened, and make it a multipurpose space for non-competitive activities. So everybody knows that the rec center's going up, this is just a space that anybody, any member of the community can use for free. Internally, it's not open right now, because there's ceiling tiles that are falling from the roof, and there's the adhesive that those tiles were glued to the ceiling on, there's asbestos in them, and so it needs remediation, and a new drywall lit. But that portion of it's a pretty simple fix, not very costly, just to get that gym open. But it has been sitting empty for a few years. Another item the community wanted to see was expanded enhanced art programming. That could be, anything from makerspace, more adult classes, rental studios, photography studio, video editing, a third item, expanded senior activities. These are, they talk about coffee area, good seating, bocce ball. I didn't hear pickleball during our meetings, but maybe. Tool checkout, makerspace, things like that. Improved accessibility, so that includes more signage in the building, the restrooms are updated. Like, the last major renovation this building was in the early 80s, and so, you know, all the restrooms, none of them really meets ADA, current ADA requirements. Wheelchair access to the building, currently cannot get to the lower level on this on any accessible route, the elevator does not go to the ground floor, things like that. Certified kitchen. There was at one point a kitchen on the second floor, but that had been removed several years ago, and the community had, was looking for potential cooking classes or communal use, the boy scouts would come in and use, like the assembly area, they could have a communal dinner, or maybe it could be used for tulip time by vendors during tulip time. And then there's auditorium improvements that could be made to increase, to get more easier for multiple users, and provide more accessible seating. So with the, so as the art committee, or the public community, Pella Community Center ad hoc committee made these recommendations, and we were here last July giving this presentation, how we wanted to move forward, and that was, and here was our recommendations after the community input. Improved accessibility, that includes improved site entry, I'll get into some more pictures and site lines later, so it'll be more clear, but modern accessible restrooms, and accessibility to all levels of the building. ADA accessibility. Exterior improvements, new windows, new doors, there are some roofs that need to be replaced, and then there's masonry repair throughout the building. In general, the masonry in the building is in pretty good condition, and the roofs have been maintained pretty well. Gymnasium needs to be repaired and reopened, with some select interior finishes replaced. Replace or improve the existing mechanical electrical plumbing systems and provide a new fire sprinkler system. So basically, as is mentioned, for the 80s was sort of the last major renovations, so all these mechanical electrical plumbing systems are leased for 40 years. So all these mechanical electrical plumbing systems are at least 40 years old, if not older, and sort of beyond their useful life cycle. Can everybody hear me okay? I'm sorry. No? And so, those items I just mentioned above here were sort of the deferred maintenance items for this project. And we are also working with the Friends of Pella Community Center because there was a fundraising effort on hand because they didn't, I think there's people in the community that didn't want to just replace these systems and sort of be sort of a very visual change. And it wouldn't be a big change to the building, just to replace the systems. So we, at the last meeting, we said we were working with the Friends of Public Community Center to go beyond that and to raise money to do work beyond that. So the next items, and we're going to get into plans, let's blow in information here in a second. They wanted to do a new elevator lobby stair addition. They also wanted to get the certified kitchen installed as part of this project, and then do some additional interior remodeling to enhance existing user's experience and use space more efficiently to allow expansion of future programming. So I just want to go through what we proposed in the last time we were here. Currently, this is the south elevation of the building. There's a couple of main entries on this elevation, but if you walk in here, you're at the landing stairs, you have the opportunity to go down to the lower level or up to the second floor. So then that's sort of your experience when you first walk in this building. The other, and then this is kind of the, right here is kind of the main entry, but it also serves as the ADA entry into the elevator here. So this is very steep, doesn't meet current ADA requirements. And then it's also accessed off the alley, so the ADA entry into the building. And so you walk in here, the left is a fairly small elevator that's also fairly dated. And you just walk into the building, then you have to go find the stairs if you want to go upstairs or downstairs. So what we proposed to make sort of more of a grand entry, I'm getting the microphone again, sorry, is to put an addition, knock down the little elevator tower here and do an addition on the southeast corner that has one large elevator that can handle the stretcher, a new stair that can go, and the elevator and the stair can go all the way down to the lower level and all the way up to the third level. So you can take all those floors, make everything accessible, and it also creates this opportunity to make a nice new entry on the primary facade that's very visual, very obvious to everybody off of Union Street. So this is a view we showed last July. Preliminary renderings with the new addition, sort of ADA entry off of Union Street. And then you have a new main entry door here, a little lobby behind here, stairs and an elevator that can connect up the floors. And it's literally, I'd like to say welcoming or apparent than what the current entry is right now. So, these plans look schematic, we were farther along than this, but these are just easy to read, so they're still on here. So, I just want to talk about why the southeast addition is also a good place for this addition. Other than, so this is the basement level. I know this is kind of hard to read here, but this is the level that's not accessible. It just so happened, this whole basement level here is mechanical systems, and there's a 10-foot by 10-foot sort of mechanical shaft down there that's filled with ductwork and so forth. Since we're doing a mechanical renovation, that ductwork can all go, and now we have this 10-foot by 10-foot path that leads us right into the gym. So if we put our elevator right here and our new stair, we have this sort of free corridor into the basement that we couldn't use before because it was all huge mechanical ducts running in there. And the reason that this spot is really good location is because these existing corridors just cross right here. You know, so it just makes this space efficient, and it all makes sense from a architectural standpoint, I think. On the ground floor, really, we're just sort of moving around functions here because right now we have, I'm sorry, I can't read these. The community service offices, we're currently in the back here, and then there's an office up on the second floor. Well, we want to make this the main entry. We want everybody coming in and out of this building right here, this access control. So we moved these community service directors here, this office. There's existing window openings right there from the old buildings. I mean, they sort of have a visual about who's coming in and outside of this building. They also look down over the gymnasium, there's some old windows that have been covered up, so now they have access, now somebody's in the gym, they can actually just look down there from the community service office. They're there the most, from my understanding. And then we just moved the art center, the green area is the art center, and so they can also help with all these kids, moving these kids around and adults in this, helping with the art center program. So this, we're sort of consolidating spaces into one area and just making relationships work better there. On the second floor, you know, there's already this meeting dining area, this is where the old kitchen was. We just want to put the kitchen right back where it was, it's connected to this large room. We moved the Union Street players sort of in the back of the house from the, here's the theater in the middle. We moved the Union Street players and the other art, whoever else would use the auditorium space to sort of back the house here. Right now, I think they're right in this area here, some people are coming in. I don't know, just putting it back here is going to feel a little bit better than when people are coming in and out of this auditorium, because they'll be back there, they'll be going into the back room and all that, sort of out of the way. So, the purple areas right now are flex space, we're calling them. They don't really have program form yet, but it's available space for future use. The bathrooms, if you walk through the building right now, the bathrooms are sort of scattered throughout the floor plan. What we propose to do is just consolidate them in a stack in this location, sort of right now, as opposed to, I mean, that's just a more efficient way of doing it. All the existing plumbing, mechanical systems would have to go anyway, so it doesn't make sense to remodel them and replace. So stacking is of efficiency there. Third floor, this is really, it is amazing, but the third floor, not a lot. Both the Crossroads occupies most of the third floor. We're just, other than the bathroom remodel and changing something to flex space, we're not really touching that. They'll give some new finishes, but that's just based off of, you know, we could remove all the ceiling grid to put in new mechanical systems and electrical systems, so some of their finishes would have to be replaced. So now I'll talk about the most important part, which is the cost. So we've gone through, designed, arbiters through design development, so mechanical, electrical, structural, architectural, civil drawings have all been brought up to a design development level. We then took those drawings and submitted them to our cost estimator. And we had a cost opinion currently all in, 7.5 million. And that includes some contingency, like 15% contingency, includes contractor profit, overhead profit, and some escalation, assuming this project happens within a couple of years of when we put this together. There's a kitchen equipment and furniture budget of $300,000, and then there's soft costs, designs, permitting, et cetera, $500,000. So we have a project total cost of 8.316 million dollars. I think, last time we were here, we were asked to break out the cost of the addition and look at other value engineering options, so that's what this number is here. We determined that addition, I showed on the southeast corner, was about 1.5 million dollar additions. I, the square footage, it was either somewhere between $500, $600 per square foot for that addition, which, that's about right for the economy of scale you're going to get off of that and the difficulty of construction, I'd say. I guess, you know, I mean, I can talk, I can take these items out, you know, other things go away. We still want to get accessibility to the lower level, so there is, that does factor into like maybe a lift or a little less somewhere else in the plans, but I can get into, I can answer questions. That's basically what I have for a presentation here today. So that feels clear?
So the total project cost is everything you showed us? The addition and everything you showed us, right?
Yeah.
That top line?
Yes. And I didn't bring much, I didn't break it out for, I can give detailed, detailed costs.
Well, we're going to talk about financing these projects next week, so. Do you have any questions about the design or?
And I don't have any updates on fundraising or anything, I don't think it's here.
That'll be for next week's discussion.
Okay.
I suppose you could put pickleball courts in that gymnasium, right? Can that be marked out for that? There'd be two running.
There's just enough gym space for one down there.
Just one?
Yeah. It's not a full-size basketball court because it's a 19.
One better than none. Okay.
Okay? Questions or anything? All right, let's move on to our, thank you.
Just a minute, Don.
Oh, sorry.
They didn't mention that the floor, the restrooms on the same floor as the office would be publicly available restrooms.
Accessible from the lobby, so people have to come into the building.
That's a plus, we need more of those.
Yep.
Oh, yes. Right here. Okay. All right, thank you. All right, aerial fire truck contract.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, once again, I'd like to refer everyone's attention to the big board for presentation on this item. And as background on this, what we have pictured up here is the city's aerial fire truck. And as council is aware, we actually have this in the by-year CIP plan, capital improvement plan, for the amount of, the budget is an amount of $1,850,000. And that truck is scheduled to be replaced in 2028. The dilemma and the reason why we're talking about this purchase tonight is the manufacturer of the fire truck requires a contract before they start constructing the fire truck or the aerial truck. And in this case, it takes 48 months to build an aerial fire truck. And if you do the math, four years out means we would need to approve a contract sometime this year to have the truck delivered in 2028. There is somewhat of an urgency, as Chief Bogart will tell us this evening. The manufacturer has notified their dealers that there's going to be a price increase on February 1st as well for the truck, and I'll let Chief Bogart talk about that. But from our standpoint, again, we had $1,850,000. What's being proposed is an expenditure of $2,068,000. Now, in describing this expenditure and just to rehash a little bit on the aerial, we talked quite a bit about the aerial during the last budget session. The current aerial truck is a 1999 truck. The dilemma that we have with the fire department is when this truck is actually replaced, that truck will be near 30 years old. And to get the truck certified, potential repairs on that aerial, if it's out for an extended period of time, that could be a public safety issue. So the longer, the older it gets, the more time it usually takes to certify trucks for this. And generally, when you look at fire equipment, the useful life of fire equipment in the industry seems to be about 30 years, it seems, on a truck like the aerial that we have. Now, let's go ahead and talk this evening about the proposed truck and how it relates to the city's purchasing policy. And I want to state, when we look at the city's purchasing policy, what was done in this case, and it was also done on our previous fire truck that we actually replaced last year on this as well. We used a cooperative purchasing agency, and this agency is named Sourcewell. And the reason why cities use Sourcewell for fire trucks is they're somewhat unique. You don't do, you don't seek bids for fire trucks every other year. And due to the uniqueness, what cities have found is it's advantageous to bid together, have one agency bid out the fire truck, and then offer that what's called the base bid or the project bid to other municipal governments for purchase. In this case, the truck that we're talking about this evening, the base truck was bid by Sourcewell for $1,775,000. And when the fire department negotiated with Reliant, which is the dealer that will actually sell the truck to the city of Pella, there's additions of just over $292,000 on this truck. And I'm going to let Chief Bogart talk about the additions, but some of them relate to the length of time and what the federal EPA standards are going to be for engines in 2028. And some of these additions are really just suiting it out for the Pella needs or the Pella fire department needs. Now, in looking at the purchasing policy, there's some gray areas involved in this, and we felt that from an administrative standpoint, I wasn't, I was unsure if I had the authority to approve this. But one thing we know for certain, the city council has authority to approve it. And that's what we're here to talk about this evening. So we started off with a CIP budget of $1,850,000. The truck that we're talking about tonight's $218,000 more than what was approved in the CIP on this. And a big part of this is the additions that Chief Bogart is going to talk to us about this evening. I would also like to mention, and this is something that I would state, we'll talk a lot about next week, and an extreme amount, and actually a lot during the city's budget work sessions, and we'll dip our toe into it next week. But this year, starting this year, the state of Iowa implemented property tax reform. And the reason why I'm mentioning this, for years, what would happen is if we had a fire truck, we'd go out and buy the fire truck, and if we knew our debt service levy was going up in four years by 30 cents, we'd work to decrease our operating levy. So by the time we got out four years from now, citizens of Pella would know the difference. You'd have the same tax rate, and we'd minimize the tax rate. The way the property tax system works now is, once your levy is set, you can never increase that operating rate. So once it goes down, it can't go back up. So the days of balancing your debt service levy against your operating levy and having an overall rate of $10.20, which I believe we've been at there for 21 years, those days are likely over on it. And what we're here to say tonight, and I want to stress, from the city administration, myself, I understand the uniqueness of the fire truck. Chief Bogart's going to tell you tonight it's a public safety issue. I tend to agree with him, I do believe it is. And we are supportive of this, but strictly from an administrative standpoint, I don't believe I have the authority to approve this purchase, and that's why we're here talking about it this evening. And also with the fact, just due to the property tax legislation changes, we're probably going to be increasing our debt service levy in four years up by 30 cents. And at that time, it may look like a property tax rate increase is due to the state legislative changes that have taken place in Iowa. And so, you roll all those together, and that's the reason we're here talking this evening about this. And so, Mandy, do we have any more highlights? Before we turn this over to the chief to walk us through the proposed aerial truck, is there any questions on the city's administrative policy, purchasing policy? What was included in the budget? Anything along those lines? Okay. Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and turn the floor over to Fire Chief, Chief Bogart, please.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this tonight. As Mike stated, this is a planned replacement of an aging city asset, an asset that served us very well, 25 years currently. And as he stated, by the time its replacement arrives, it will be going on 30, 28, or 29, I mean, going on 30. So we feel that's a pretty opportune time to get the best out of it without losing availability and spending money to keep it that way. So, in '22, current truck has served us very well until '22, when it failed to pass its certification. In order to make it pass, we had to do an extensive hydraulic repair. I had to go to Mike for the money because it was not in our budget. And of course, he approved it, but to avoid this in the future and the two-week downtime that resulted, we put it in the future CIP to avoid this in the future. So, that's the basis of how we got here. We initially put the figure in thinking we would have time to spec the truck, update the CIP total before we asked for a signed contract. The 48-month lead time sort of negated that, and we ran out of time. So that's why the 1.85 doesn't quite reach it because we didn't have a chance to update the numbers based on our spec versus their base spec. So, in addition, I can tell you that the proposed truck will do everything the current one will do and a whole lot more. Mike has seen the slides, his capabilities are awesome. We had a chance to, a six-man committee that I don't want of, travel to Pierce manufacturing. And we demoed the truck, we were able to drive it, very impressive. So we're not giving up anything, and we're gaining a whole lot of things. The price, yeah, it's unbelievable that you could spend that kind of money on a truck, but that's where we are. And as Mike stated, to wait simply costs more, and it simply puts the delay even further. So that's how we got here. So, as you can see, the truck on the screen is the mid-mount tower that's being proposed. It's unique to Pierce, they came up with this design, the mid-mounts have been around for a long time, but not this one. So, next slide, man. It's much lower in height, 10'10", puts it probably two feet lower than our current truck. Next slide, please. Here's the best one, the overall length, 5'9" shorter. You can see, no longer do you have that platform hanging out the front. It currently goes to the front, and you have to look underneath it and around it. The proposed truck, it swings to the rear, it's mounted within the confines of the truck, no overhang. Current truck doesn't fit into the red square, the proposed truck does. So that's a big one for us, drivability is much better, safer, city streets are tight, this thing will get around better. Here's another one that, that shows how the platform can reach the ground. The one at the rear is our current one, rear mount. You have to have it extended that far in order to reach the ground. The current one does it fully retracted, only takes 20 feet. And we have some more slides that we can show you if you wanna see them, but is there any questions that I can answer?
Is the 48-month lead time because it takes that long to make it, or is there a backlog, or what?
It's, it's both, but it's mostly a backlog. It's, probably would require from 14 to 16 months to build, the rest of it is a waiting list.
So, I think I heard you need to sign, we need to sign a contract by February 1 to get it in the rotation?
That's correct, and to lock this.
And the price, private price is locked, is there?
Price is locked in, yes.
Is there a percentage of the cost we have to pay upfront on the contract?
If you do, there is some savings, but you don't have to. That is the price, the way I set up the contract, no money changes hands until 10 days prior to delivery.
Well, $2 million is a lot of money, but if you amortize it over 30 years, it's not so daunting.
That's very true.
Because is Pierce the only game in town?
For this particular truck, yes, they designed this thing, and there are others, but not like this, so.
I see the advantage of this design.
Yep.
Do we know what the dollar amount is if we wait? If we waited for two months before we signed the contract, what the increase is, or?
The actual, the actual increase won't be announced until that date. The rep tells us, expect 2.5 to 3.5%. So round that to three, you're looking at over $60,000, just an increase, just for waiting. Yep.
You know, Randy, a year ago, you made, I got uncomfortable when you talked to us about when the truck was out of commission. And the fact that we had to depend on a neighboring community for their truck if we needed it. And being a person that has been in the upper level of many of our downtown buildings, it scares me to death not to have a replacement strategy on this truck. You know, when we were elected, part of what our commission is, is to keep this community safe. And more than anything, I see the merit in a purchase like this. So thank you for being on top of the game, and thank you for making us aware. And I am in full agreement with this purchase.
Certainly, thank you for the support.
Is there any value in the old truck?
Possibly some, yes. A small community that's never had one before, this would be a great way for them to, to purchase one and, and join. Value would be, it's a guess, possibly $100,000, possibly less, possibly a little more. I've looked at them on some of the truck broker websites. It's age is what's against it. If it was 20-year-old or less, it's worth considerably more.
If just a normal citizen thought that sounded like a good deal and wanted to drive it back and forth to work?
For, for a council member, we'd make that happen.
He gets a picture teller at that price.
Well, is there some kind of a mandate that primary fire equipment, primary, couldn't be more than 20 years old?
There is, and that's what, that's what's attached to pumper trucks primarily, which means we have to have one that's less than 20. Bit of a gray area, because this is our only aerial, but it's not the only pumper. So I'm not sure what the leeway is there, but it being the only aerial, that could apply, I'm not sure.
This, that, this the ascendant truck, that's the model?
Yes, the ascendant, yes.
In, in this quote, it's for an enforcer, is that the same thing, or a different name?
That's the cab, that's the cab model, yep.
Gotcha.
Does this have value in length as well for a Pellet Corp warehouse? Or do we, is there, you said there was no detractions, just adds to the model?
It, it's a full 100-foot of reach as well as the current one.
And so that's the same?
Yep, yep.
Chief, do you have any slides you could quickly show that would be on the stability of the truck?
I believe so, you have a couple of slides, Mandy?
Yep.
She has them behind you, chief.
Yeah. This is a real good one, it shows that the ascendant can operate within 20 feet. It needs, it needs a minimum of 20 feet to operate between street and building. Ours would require 38, that's a huge difference. There's, there's another one, slide 31. Shows this in a street photo, same thing, if you got a tight spot, that thing can operate fully in that 20 feet, so. Bring up 26. No, that's, that one, that one works good.
Okay.
Here it shows the below-grade operation capabilities that our current truck can't do any of. We have no below-grade, and, and this allows that. That one allows the truck to even tilt to get you five more degrees, and it's perfectly stable with that tilt in place. Here it shows the tight circle that it can turn, and, and one of the reasons, one of the adds we put on that truck was a rear steer capability, which tightens it up to the, the green circle, so that the rear axles can steer and aid the front, so it just tracks around the circle. I had the opportunity to drive one of these at Pierce, made a huge difference in city streets, maneuverability, drivability, much, much better.
Does that mean we can change our cul-de-sac requirements for development then?
If you want. 38? No 38, okay.
Got any pictures of you driving it?
No, but it took a couple of minutes in there, and I was, I was impressed. It just, it, it doesn't feel as big as it looks, so. Very, very impressive truck, a lot of capabilities there, obviously a big investment, but as Mr. Mayor pointed out, 30 years of use, money well spent.
So what do we need to do tonight, Mike?
Tonight is, we wanted to make sure if council had any questions on it, or, you know, particularly as it related to the bidding process, or if we had to do any additional, provide any additional information, we want to know about that for formal consideration. But our plans are, is it may not be on the agenda for next Tuesday, but it may be during our goal-setting sessions, there may be a resolution approving the contract, that will likely either be on the 23rd or 30th. We wanted to make sure we addressed any questions before council considered this for formal, formal consideration.
Well, so if the waiting two months increases it by 60 conservatively, effectively makes the add-on only 232,000 effectively, the part that you were nervous about approving. I think the hard one's gonna be next week, if you know what gets sacrificed. We've heard a lot of requests even tonight for dollars. It's pretty easy to say a lot, this is first part of it, but there's a lot of priorities.
Yeah, I think we need to do it before February 1. Alrighty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, last item on our discussion list is the pickleball courts. Come on, let's.
All right, Mr. Mayor, what we have this evening is a discussion on pickleball courts and tennis court facilities at Quanis Park. And I would like to state that the outset is, we're looking for direction from the city council on this item. And we do have a picture of the current courts of the Quanis Park and the cracks that we've experienced on, on the courts. It is important to note that in 2018, we did conduct repairs to courts for about $24,000. And to deal with the crack issues and trying to repair them, in the current year budget, in this current fiscal year, we had a budget of $60,000 for resurfacing or crack repairing at Quanis. And the one that staff has had is, they've been out for bid twice on this item. The first time, we didn't get any bids. The second item that we had was a single-source bid of $89,000. And I've been informed, at least it's the opinion of staff, is that's a relatively short-term fix on it. May only be upwards of, Jeanette, correct me if I'm wrong, three years, two to three?
Yeah, less than three.
Less than three on it. So when you look at $90,000 and less than three years of usage on this, what we asked the staff was, well, how could you ultimately repair this? And the answer is, is to reconstruct the courts. We believe to reconstruct the courts is roughly $500,000 to replace the courts, tear it up, and put in new courts would be the dilemma that we have. And so I'm looking at the budget item, and once again, you're talking about administratively improving items for $30,000 over budget. And you're being told, or at least it's the opinion of staff, that this is a relatively short-term fix. And from what I've seen in the past, I think that's probably an accurate description of the proposed repairs. And so what we looked at is, what could we do in lieu if we wanted to stay within the confines of the city budget? And so, Mandy, let's go ahead. The project that is being proposed, or for consideration on this, would be to remove the courts from Quanis Park and actually put in a soccer pitch field. And Jeanette, correct me if I'm wrong, the soccer pitch, this would be something very similar that was up at Lincoln School, correct?
No, this would just be open green space, that we could get, the mini pitches down, that's a different question.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But yeah, this would just be open green space, and, and the reason why we're recommending that we could maybe set it up for soccer is, when we took this to the community services board, they wanted to see if one kind of recreational athletic use was taken out, they wanted to see something similar. So that's why we came up with, you know, what, what's the least expensive option we could put in, which would be the term, so.
So what's being proposed by the community services board and staff for consideration is to replace the courts, and to actually demo the courts and actually restore the items that we have here. But also to install lights at Caldwell Park, pickleball courts as well, that would allow for elongated use for longer operating hours at Caldwell, Caldwell Park. That would be able to be within the city confines, or the city budgetary amounts of $60,000. Now, where we're at financially, council, I told Jeanette, at least in my opinion, is if we're significantly above budgeted amounts, and this is not only true for pickleball court projects, somewhere what we had for fire trucks discussions tonight, anything that's over, significantly over budget is instantly almost kicked over to the next budget cycle on it and discussed at council again. And we have a few of those projects that'll be carried over during our budget deliberations in February of this year. So from a financial standpoint, if we're significantly above the $60,000, the plan was, was to talk about it during the upcoming budget season. And the reason for that is, by the time you look at authorization of the project and requesting additional funds, we felt that there wouldn't be significant delays associated with it, and the council could review it in a scope of other community requests as well. So with that, let's go ahead, please, Mandy? But again, this project was reviewed with the community services board, and that's why it's at consideration this evening. So what we're doing is seeking direction on, on the project. If we were to entertain any large-scale renovations or replacement of the courts for half a million dollars, my recommendation would be it needs to go back through the city's budget process, and we need to talk about it in the context of what other projects are being proposed, the city's property tax rate. However, if council wanted to consider a short-term repair, that's certainly the prerogative of the city council. But once again, it was an item that I felt administratively, I'd like to have your input before we consider the short-term repair. Jeanette, is there anything else that I failed to mention, or that you would like to mention for council's consideration?
Yeah, and the courts are currently closed, we had to close them this spring because they are unusable. So that's, that's another reason why we tried to come up with, with an alternative that was, you know, a win-win, knowing that, yes, we need more pickleball courts, but to have the courts there and not repair them and still keep them closed, I'm not, I'm not sure that's in the best interest of the city either, so.
Okay, I think that concludes the staff presentation. Mr. Mayor, we're looking for direction this evening.
Just for my own education sake, hopefully it's helpful to everybody, for the pickleballers, doc and the like, is there an association in town? Are you guys organized? I, I've heard a lot of really intelligent people speak well tonight. It seems to be something that, when, when I was a young tennis player in high school, I was in Newton, Iowa, they had a Newton Tennis Association, was very robust, and was very active in, in organizing their efforts to advocate for tennis, this was back in the 1900s. I would suggest maybe that's a really nice, low-hanging fruit, so that we can work together on solving this problem. Pickleball's a fantastic sport, I have played it a couple of times, once with this guy. And it's, it's a blast, and you're right, it attracts, it's good for the community, it's good for, not for dating's brain, which we want to preserve. So I think it's, I think collaboration's really, really important here. And other big projects, we see they're also important to our community, we usually pull off well with collaboration. So I, two cents, I don't know if that's in the works, but that might be an easy, easy for me to say, but easy for those that are fervent about it to get organized, and let's, let's start working on collaboration on it.
Yeah, and, and I will say too, there's, there's a couple of different pickleball contingents in town, you know, and I have had meetings with other interested parties that they want to organize, they want to do fundraising efforts. So before I even took, took this in, I met with, I think it was six or seven different individuals where we talked about, okay, if we can't rebuild these courts, what are the options? Can we fundraise, can we help you fix these courts, that type of stuff? So those conversations are out there, and, and, you know, as Chuck mentioned, you know, we, we worked with them too initially before, before, when they were just tennis courts. In one of those pictures, there was a crack repair that volunteers did for us, that lasted less than a month. You know, so they went to all that effort to get the product from us and fix it, and it ended up cracking and sinking, and, you know. And so it's, so when we talk about, you know, repairing it versus replacing it versus finding a different use for it, that's really our struggle, is that these courts really are way past their usable life. And, and continuing crack repairs is a real tough decision when we look at other needs in our community, so. But there is definitely interest out there, these individuals are more than happy to work with the city on one of their options.
Was there an earthquake over there sometime in the last couple of years? What about the installation of this fail that just happened?
It's a, it's like a concrete basin, there's been two overlays of asphalt on it. The last time was in the, in like the mid-1990s, so basically that... So basically that asphalt is so old, and I wish Denny was here because he can, he can talk about asphalt. But when it gets so old, it loses its elasticity. So it, in the winter, it, it'll crack open, but then when it warms up again, if the cracks don't seal anymore, you just keep getting wider and wider and wider cracks. Because it just, it can no longer contran, contract expand, so. So that's the issue, is that it's just, it's lost its ability to kind of self-seal. And then you just end up with these cracks that just go down like six inches, so.
My guess is the soil base under it's no good either.
I think they're just little.
But that, that being said, I've had a number of people talk to me about how they miss having an amenity like this on that side of town. I, I understand Park and Rex's desire to be efficient and keep everything together as much as they can, but it's really nice to have kind of neighborhood amenities as well.
Females are really coming in, they don't, they don't want soccer fields. I've been all over the world. People can play soccer anywhere, but you need picklecourts to play pickleball.
And we talk about, all the time about diversity and dining, diversity and all sorts of activities. I would hate to lose these and, and lose this function. Because it adds just another, another level of athletic diversity to our community. And John, I want to go back to your point about, in the community center. That's a really good idea, I think. Even if it is just one court. It would give an opportunity for winter play. So, and I, at Caldwell Park, I think having lights there is a good idea as well. You know, I just think that this is a sport that's growing in popularity, and we all have to move it or lose it, and we certainly don't want to lose it. So give people an opportunity to do, as Mark said, have activities in their neighborhood would be fabulous.
Because our high school kids are playing pickleball in T P, and I know Christian High plays it in their murals. I mean, it's not going to go away among the younger set either.
Right, and they have a lot of tournaments too, because I, I do see the pictures and they're quite impressive.
I think we had a Caldwell issue in that when those courts were proposed, the neighbors got very upset about how close those courts were to their back door. And the pledge was made that they would not be lighted.
Oh, really?
So they did not have to listen to that interview. Now whether anybody remembers that, I didn't say it.
In fact, I think it's very important to have the, a facility in that part of town that children can walk to or bike to instead of going, they're down here to university or wherever, you know, Caldwell Park. And so there's just tennis courts there now, is that?
Just pickleball.
There's pickleball.
There's both, there's both.
And you're gonna take everything out?
Yes.
So there'd be no courts there?
Correct.
Oh, well, that's not, I don't think that's a very good idea.
My two cents is I'm not hearing that anybody's wanting to get rid of pickleball. I think this is a, obviously a hazard at this point. And there's not really an in-between spot to just leave them. Somebody will get hurt. So the cheapest way to make it safe is to make it grass for now. We, we don't have to call a soccer field. But until we get it on the agenda to get it spaced out into the CIP with streets in need and fire trucks and everything else to plan it out, I don't think anybody's anti-pickleball. I think you have to come up with a safety plan in the interim. And so I, I want to express that's my opinion. I'm not anti-pickleball by taking these out. These are dangerous to immediately try to play on them. I think we just need to get organized with how we plan out the, the solution going forward. In fact, I think it needs more pickleball courts at, at Kiwanis, so, anyway, I just want that.
Mr. Mayor? Can I speak?
Sure.
Okay.
You can do it from there, Chuck.
Oh, that's right. I'm able to walk again, so I'm pretty tickled about that.
I, I just would like to ask one other question. Who was all on the Pellicomity Services Board that, that made this decision? I assume, Jeanette, you're on it?
Yeah, the board reports me in there.
And who else, who else is on there? Is there any pickleball people at all?
Yeah, yeah, one of the, probably the biggest pickleball advocates in the town is on my board, so. He doesn't play anymore. Glenn doesn't come anymore. Well, it, it, the fact that he doesn't play doesn't mean he doesn't support the sport. So he spoke very, uh, he spoke very passionately about the need for safety versus the need for more courts. So the, the community services board is, is behind pickleball courts. It's just, it's just the, the budget and how do you maintain safe facilities?
Yeah.
And, and provides facilities. So there, there's, there is a lot of support. And I've talked to probably every single one of you in this room, and I'm very supportive, but it's, it's tough. It's tougher, so.
Well, it sounds like we don't have a very large budget for, for this. And I'm not sure how that's all arrived at, as far as the council is concerned. But, uh, I don't, I don't see the advantage at this point to turning it into a soccer field. We have so many soccer places for kids to play already. And the thing that, that is amazing, like Doctor spoke about, is that we're so in favor of building all these tennis courts and pickleball courts are used so much more than, like even at Kiwanis, we, we originally wanted to turn all those courts into pickleball courts. And we weren't, we were denied that, but you go there when they were in pretty decent shape and people would be playing pickleball, but there was hardly anybody playing tennis. And it's been brought out about the, the value to the community. And, and I'm not familiar with budgets and things like that for, for sports and recreation and things like that. But to have only a sixty thousand dollar budget for, for something that would be so fantastic for our community seems relatively small when you're talking about spending over eight million dollars for the community center. And not saying that that's not a great idea. I, I, I'm sure you guys have studied all that out, but that eight million dollars is to provide enhancement for a lot of people also. And when you compare, I, I, I don't know much about it, but I, I can't believe that we couldn't get, how mu, how much did the Caldwell Courts cost? Does anybody have an idea on that?
No, I mean, it was, we took an old, the old skate park, so we didn't, it wasn't all new concrete, so I'd have to go back and. But that, that cost for the, the, the five hundred thousand, that's a quote that I got less than a year ago to build this exact same facility. So that's not, you know, that's a, that's a today number of, of building more pickleball courts. So to build four tennis or twelve pickleballs, that five hundred, and that doesn't include fencing or lights, so.
Is there room there for, there'd be room for twelve pickleball courts?
Yeah.
In the area that's tennis and pickleball now?
Right, if we didn't, if we didn't put tennis back in.
Because I would assume we've got our tennis thing paired with the new facility. We don't need more tennis, I don't think. So if we were gonna do something there, the wisest thing to do would be make it all pickleball.
Yeah, that's right.
Now, if you want to get organized and do a real sales job, due to good stewardship, the Tennis Association is sitting on a bunch of money. And your point is valid, there's a lot more pickleball players than there are tennis.
Yeah, from what I've heard, the tennis people aren't real happy with pickleball people. Except that as they retire, they're all going to pickleball. But, um, I would just, I guess in summing it up, request that, uh, let's not give away that great space to, to soccer. There's plenty of places for soccer fields. And if it's possible to put it in the budget for, for next year, I, I'd have to think that with some, and I don't know, Jeanette, have you checked with other cities as far as cost? Where they go to get estimates on the cost of courts and things like that?
Yeah, we, we, uh, we talked to other cities. I mean, we searched the internet and we just, I mean, we had contractors flat out tell us they wouldn't touch the courts to fix because they were so bad they couldn't guarantee them.
Yeah.
So.
So to start all over with a great, with a great base and everything at five hundred thousand is what you're saying?
Well, I think after the research that was done, it came down to, it's not worth repairing what's there. We either have to replace them or do something else. So that's a decision that has to be made.
Well, we would certainly, as pickleball people would certainly appreciate consideration for replacing it before you go to.
Tearing them out.
Tearing them out, putting a soccer field there, it's.
That, that message has come across.
Okay.
So if we organize and get a pickleball association, who do we talk to? Jeanette or do we?
Yeah, Jeanette. Work with Jeanette.
Because some, some mornings or some days, we have like thirty-five people there to do open play pickleball. And there's six courts and only twenty, and that's okay, but when we used to have the two coaches, you could manage those people. But a lot of people show up to play and, and we love to visit, but sometimes you want to play and not wait two games. So, but a lot of, and more people have started to play, so it's just gonna get bigger and bigger. And we don't have, if we just have the six coach for another two years, that's a lot of waiting.
When, when Mr. DeYoung mentioned the, the lighting and the, I, I don't know what, if you get any comments, but if I was living near those pickleball courts on Caldwell, I think it'd drive me crazy. So if you're talking about putting six of them up north? I, I just checked, there's some houses around there. I don't know what they've been saying. That'd be pretty loud.
I think the, the new courts would be a much more priority than lighting.
Well, you know, this is an idea that Jeanette and the services board, community service board came up with as a way to increase the availability of courts, is to light those courts, and so you could have, that, that was, you know, that was the idea.
Well, they do have a light already, and I'm someone that lives in that neighborhood, and it does not bother me. That's a security light. That's not a court light. That's security only. It's not meant to be played on.
In the summer, people do play at night.
Yeah, so, and, and to address kind of some of Mark's concerns too, when we talk about lighting the courts, we're not lighting them until ten o'clock at night. It's just to get those, you know, the, the spring and kind of those fall hours get, you know, so you can maybe play until eight or nine. And then, um, and I've been told that there's a new quieter pickleball that some communities are requiring on courts after a certain time to, to help alleviate that. So the, the sport is kind of helping itself out a little bit. Because, you know, those Kiwanis courts are great in somebody's backyard too. So, you know, but so, and so a little bit on the, on the lighting, yes, Mayor was correct. This would just help alleviate some of that until we come up with another plan, like I had discussed with the other group of, that they wanted to, you know, go and fundraise. So this was just kind of like a, something that would help until we could come up with a better plan, so.
So we need direct, or the council, administration needs direction. I'm gathering that repairing them is not a viable option. Removing everything for the long term is not a viable option. From, is that a viable? So we need to explore replacing them. What would really help is if you guys would get together and come up with some money to help us do that. A lot of projects get done in this community in a joint effort between the city and interested parties. If you take the Kiwanis Park, the Dog Park appears like it's gonna happen with some assistance. So if we can, if a pickleball group can come and ask for the city to participate in some new pickleball courts, that would make it viable. I think we need enough people from our pickleball group to, to go out to various organizations and ask for donations. And, and if you would give us an idea of how much the city would participate, we'd, we'd certainly be willing to try to do that.
Could, could we try to nail down a cost to make it twelve pickleball courts?
Five hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, you're pretty comfortable with that? Tear it out, redo it, okay.
Does it have fencing or lighting?
I, I, what are pickleballs made out of? Like magic? What, like unicorn dust?
Okay, so for about this, I'll, I'll give you four tennis courts for five hundred thousand dollars. Then we will then convert to twelve pickleball courts.
I'm, I'm just.
Are there made of old fire trucks or what?
Yeah, you know, you need to have like a ball for two million dollars.
So, Mayor, would you like to discuss this during the city's budget work session, which will be in February?
But in the meantime, if you guys want to kind of organize and come to the city and say, hey, we've got fifty thousand or a hundred thousand, whatever, that's the way things get done, please. I promise you that. Alright. Sounds good. Everybody agree?
Yep.
Alright, so then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Opposing Brandon Morris, all in favor, please say yes. opposed, no. May I please call a roll?
Austin?
Yes.
Raydor Morris? Yes. Butler?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Dan Striling?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Motion passed, we are adjourned.